I'd like to call the meeting to order. A moment of silence, please. All rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So exciting.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo, here. Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Mrs. Fritz.
Mr. Ochinski.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Dr. Anamon.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting of February 2019. First up on our superintendent's report, we have about, I think I last counted, 535 or 538 school districts in the state of New Jersey, and there's only a select few people that are named exemplary elementary educators throughout the state. We're very fortunate to have one of those people working here in our community, Stephanie Primavera, our principal of Aptua School. As you can tell by the audience, there's a lot of red here, and even some Aptua people not wearing red. So I would say probably 90% of our audience today is Aptua families, teachers, and even some students here. So one of our loveliest schools, and we're really fortunate to have Ms. Primavera. So the state notified us a couple of weeks ago that she was given this award. We were going to do this in January, but we were snowed out. So on behalf of the Board of Education, on behalf of the parents and students and staff of Aptua School, I'd like to present Ms. Primavera with this plaque, and I think she wants to see a couple of words.
So they're all kind of taking bets on when I start tearing up because I've nicknamed myself the crying principal. And all happy tears, I don't get through many things being emotional because I'm just so passionate about being here. So I'm so very honored and humbled to be named the 2018 exemplary educator by the New Jersey Department of Education. It is a privilege to join such a remarkable and distinguished group of educators who represent the best that the state of New Jersey has to offer. There are so many outstanding, passionate, creative leaders throughout the state who challenge, inspire, and support their school community every day. To join this group of remarkable educators is not an honor I take lightly. I would like to thank my present and past mentors, Dr. Anamon, Mr. Novak, Dr. McQuade, Mr. Rashika, and Mr. Cardinal, for believing in me and contributing to the application process, as I know was an extensive one. Each and every day, I lead my school community with my students' best interests at heart. I am very fortunate to work with such a supportive faculty who are passionate about education and dedicated to cultivating an environment where children feel safe, happy, and confident. Also, I would not be standing here without my amazing colleagues, from whom I have learned so much. The continued support and encouragement I receive from Dr. Anamon, Mr. Novak, Dr. McQuade, and Mrs. Francisco is directly correlated to my success as a leader. Thank you to the West Milford Board of Education for all of the time and effort you give to ensure the children of West Milford have the best educational experiences possible. Lastly, but certainly not least, thank you to my family who put up with me, continue to support me, and all of my dreams every step of the way. It is an honor to stand in front of the board tonight and be recognized for my achievements. There's an African proverb that states, "If you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go with others." I continue to find much success as a leader because I am part of this incredible school community. I am growing and learning every day, and I am humbled that I get to do this in my hometown. It has been an honor and a privilege to grow both personally and professionally in the community I call home, and I mean it. Thank you very much. This really means everything, so thank you.
We want to thank you. Stephanie, you do such a wonderful job, and you are a glowing example of what represents West Milford and the administrators and the staff members that we have here in the district. Thank you for making us shine.
Thank you, Stephanie. I know your kids are looking to get out of here and go get a bite, so we are going to read a resolution later on in the agenda, but I promise you don't have to stay for all that. So thank you again for everything you do.
Monthly progress?
Okay. All right. I gave you a minute to sneak out, but you didn't.
Now you're not.
So just the monthly progress toward district goals. We've been talking a lot about math these past few years, and I just do have some, one major note to inform the board upon. Next year, for the first time, probably in district history, we're going to be offering Algebra I, Algebra I course to 7th graders. So historically, it's been offered to 8th graders, and then the students who don't take it in 8th grade, take it in 9th grade. Next year, we're going to start another gifted track for our current 6th grade class. We're going to have an assessment process in place between now and at some point this spring, where we're going to screen our students to create, we don't know how many sections, we're anticipating probably one section of Algebra I for 7th graders. Those students will take geometry in grade 8, and they will enter high school as freshmen taking Algebra II, and they'll finish up as seniors, most likely taking Calc BC, which is a course that, if you want to attend one of the more rigorous, more highly competitive universities, that's a course they like to see on your transcript. So we look forward to that. Next year, the process begins now. We're starting to look at students, our 6th graders in all six of our district schools, to see who qualifies. Yes?
Was the sequence of the math changed? Because I know it used to be Algebra I, geometry, and then Algebra II.
That's still the same sequence, but the year you take it, it's going to change.
Oh, okay.
You're going to take it in the same order, but some students are going to start Algebra I in 7th, some will probably start in 8th, and some might even not take it until freshman year of high school.
Okay. Sounds like the sequence changed. Okay, thank you.
Secondly, we have just recently released by the Department of Ed, the 2017-18 School Performance Report. These are always one year in reverse, so the 2017-18 School Performance Report was released the other day. However, it's embargoed yet, so we can't release it to the public, but we will be reviewing it at our Administrative Council meeting tomorrow, and then we'll be discussing it the board probably by next month, it should be able to take this information public. It'll be in the newspapers as well. They usually give us a week or two to look at the data before it hits the newspapers. So we can expect that in March here. And secondly, Read Across America Week is this week. Dr. Seuss's birthday, I believe, is Saturday.
Yes, it is.
So it's a weekend birthday. Usually, the schools pick either the week before or the week after Dr. Seuss's birthday for Read Across America Week. I know Mr. Seidowitz, Mrs. Dwyer, I've already read to their students, and other board members will be taking visits to our elementary schools this week or next to read to our students.
Okay. Kelsey's not here this evening. Mr. Novak.
All right. Good evening. Again, congratulations to Mrs. Primavera and the entire Aptua community. Wore my Aptua red, not realizing it, but it looks like it works out. And I did have a jacket, but Dr. Anamon spilled coffee all over it earlier, so I wasn't able to bring it out.
I'm glad you cast the blame to the right person.
I do have a couple of items that are off-script. The first one is there was a honeywell sent at about 6:30 tonight, once again highlighting our digital citizenship event. We're taking it a little bit differently this year, and we sent a plea out to the community. So I want to make sure we have it on camera tonight and talk to the people in the audience to look for and interact with that honeywell, because it was looking for positive examples of digital citizenship within the community. It was a Google form, it was a nomination form, to find those people who do great things out there in the world. Just to highlight one, we have a group in town called Help a Neighbor. I know there's probably some people in the room who are part of that group. It's a group not looking for accolades, not looking for a pat on the back, just doing great work. So those are the types of things we're looking for in the community, because those are the types of things that we are trying to inspire in our students when we host things like Digital Citizenship Night. Too often, we see the Facebook groups and the things that happen in the community that just tear things down and, you know, just fester on the bad. So we're looking to, you know, shift that and hopefully highlight the good in the community. We know it's there. We just don't talk about it enough. So that came out tonight. There's a nomination form, so please do your best, find those people, and have them apply, and we're going to honor them at Digital Citizenship Night and probably at a future board meeting. Secondly, along the same lines, our work in digital citizenship also works with our goals hand-in-hand with character education. We had a great opportunity today at the high school to sit with the review panel from the National Character Education Forum to review our high school and take a look at the things that we've been doing over the years. So it was a great opportunity. I've been involved in a number of those meetings over the years at our elementaries and at Macapin. It was nice to sit at the high school and be able to talk about the good work and the deliberate attempts over the last few years to really put some great things in place and highlight the good work that's going on there. So it was a nice, good event. Dr. Anamon was there. We were able to, you know, really talk about that building. Moving on, I'm doing a brief overview of our PD Day. I know we have a training to, you know, with our ethics training coming up, so I'm going to be relatively brief or attempt to be. We plan an elaborate professional development day for our staff. We have, you know, one of our buildings well-represented here today. We are able to allow our elementary schools to stay in their home building and work in their rooms on some of the district initiatives that we've had in place. They worked on some of our efforts in readers and writers workshop training, which we've talked about a lot in here, as well as getting in groups and discussing some of the work we've had in Star Math and looking at student goals and objectives and that sort of thing. At the high school level, for our high school and middle school, for our core departments, we had a co-teaching training where we had a presenter come in and speak to that large group in the auditorium as a starting point for a lot of the work that we're going to be talking about going forward, where we're looking to enhance our cooperative teaching relationships and those co-teacher relationships with general education, special education, working hand-in-hand. So we had a good turnout. We had a busy day. Staff worked hard, and feedback has been, you know, pretty good to this point for our goals and process going forward. And that's my brief report.
Oh, thank you very much. I have a question. On the Star Math, have there been any problems with reports going home?
Sure. Yeah. Not a problem per se.
No, just...
So what ended up happening, the Renaissance program that creates Star Math, they did an upgrade to their platform. And when they upgraded their software platform, they changed all of the settings, and they happened to do this in the last week of our marking period. So our typical report time is to send home the parent report with our report cards. We have a line that way. We weren't able to send the reports with report cards, but they were out, they did come home last Thursday or Friday, I believe. And in that process, we had to work with the company, we had to adjust our settings, we had to change in the benchmark, the benchmark relationship between the scores and our comparison. So in the past, we used to send home a score report that was based on the benchmark against students in West Milford. The report that goes home now benchmarks our students against the state. We were happy to see some, you know, some positive correlations, and we also had some adjustments that our staff has done a great job with taking a look at and going through those things, so...
So families have been notified that the glitch has been fixed?
It wasn't a glitch.
Sounds like a glitch.
So, yeah, we adjusted to the upgrade from the Renaissance Company.
Okay.
And it's all been sent out, and the last report that came out is actually pretty good. We've been talking about it for a few years, and now you're able to see, as a parent, and I'm sure there's people in the room who have seen it, I hope, that there's about seven points on our line now where you can track a student over two years, you know, being able to see the growth in relationship to scaled score and national percentile rank and that type of thing. It arms our educators and our administrators with a little bit of a finer-tuned look at a student's academic progress in mathematics.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything? Okay. Mrs. Francisco, special reports.
The minutes from reorganization, January 3rd, and our meeting on January 22nd are available for review and consideration.
I need a motion? Move to accept the minutes of the January 3rd executive session and the workshop and executive session on January 22nd. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We're a little short tonight. I have no president's report tonight. I did just give a slight update at the last meeting. This month, we have an extra meeting that we, a number of board members did their training. Will and Terry and I also did a leadership training this month through New Jersey School Board, and then, of course, as part of, my report will be later on this evening, we have Kathy Helowa, our field representative from New Jersey School Boards, coming to do our presentation on Ethics, on the Code of Ethics. That's a presentation that we normally do once a year. This year, we were supposed to do it on January 29th, and unfortunately, we had to cancel the meeting due to snow. So she's coming this evening, but we had to rearrange her. She has to come a little later. So we're going to do the bulk of the meeting first, and then she should be here for the presentation. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Stephanie, I think if you leave, everybody else will follow you. They're waiting for you.
They're waiting for a good time.
Yeah, this is it. This is really a good time. Do you want me to take an inter? Should we take a break? We're just going to take a five-minute break so everyone can get in and out and rearrange everything.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for winning a prestigious award.
Oh, it's all Mrs. Leslie's fault. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first for five minutes for each speaker for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during public comment are asked to address the topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the name of students during public comment. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment?
Move to close public comments, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, can, Mrs. Dwyer, you're up for education, please. Okay. Move to adopt, to approve, items 1 through 9, and hand carry number 10. Shall I read the resolution for Mrs. Primavera? Yes, please. Okay. The superintendent and West Milford Board of Education, on behalf of the community, publicly acknowledges and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Stephanie Primavera, principal of Aptua School, for being named as exemplary elementary educator by the State of New Jersey Department of Education. The recommendation of the superintendent to approve the submission of the Comprehensive Equity Plan for the school year... Oh, wait a minute. Yeah. Okay. Oh, blah, blah, blah. No, there's no, the next thing is the schools... Oh, yes. Yeah, it's the, okay. Then, okay, the committee of the superintendent to adopt the following resolution proclaiming March 2019 as Music in Our School Month, whereas the study of music contributes to young people's development through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity, and whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of types of music and active musical experiences, and whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas it is the stated objective of the public school to prepare children for a productive role in our society. And whereas, the national, whereas, what does it say? Name? Okay. Whereas, the National Association for Music Education has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month, focusing on the theme "All Music, All People." Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of West Milford Township endorses the observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purpose and practices of music education and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. The Board of Education of the West Milford School District, for its own part, rededicates itself to the maintenance of a music education program that will be relevant to the needs of the children placed in its care and will reach and positively influence each child that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the public meeting of the West Milford Board of Education held on February 26, 2019. We also have a resolution for the art, Youth Art Month. The recommendation of the superintendent to adopt the following resolution proclaiming March 2019 as Youth Art Month, whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students, including the following. Art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities. Art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Art education gives students a deeper understanding of oral cultures, values, and beliefs. Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects, and art education integrates students' learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics, philosophy, and, whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences on all students' education, therefore, be it resolved that support should be given to art educators as they attempt to strengthen art education in their schools and communities. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed that March be observed as Youth Art Month, focusing on the theme "Great New Day" in the schools of the West Milford School District, and this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the public meeting of the West Milford Board of Education held February 26, 2019. Second. Thank you. I thought we were going to have a resolution for Stephanie. No? Yeah. Okay. Any discussion? You know what? I think we need to read the one because it's a hand carry. Sorry. Okay. Okay. Move to approve the superintendent's resolution. Resolve that the Board approve a payment of $300 to the Morris Hills Regional School District, representing tuition for student ID 68195 to attend the Morris Hills Adult High School for the period retroactive from January 28, 2019, through May 27, 2019, accordance with the terms of the release agreement signed by the student's parent, which is incorporated by reference herein. And this was read because it's a hand carry and it was not on the agenda, so... Any discussion? All right. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
We're going to say roll together?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Okay. Kate, would you like to move the personnel items, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to move items 1 through 6 in personnel.
Second.
Any discussion on the items? If not, Mrs. Francisco?
Not kind of.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Okay.
I have another one.
Oh, there's a hand carry also. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, the blue one. You need to...
I'd like to make a motion for hand carry number 1 in personnel.
Number 7. Number 7.
Oh, hand carry number 1, number 7.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's...
Second.
Okay.
The recommendation of the superintendent to approve an additional assignment for Ruth Hayes as an instructional aide for the elementary schools for one hour per day at the hourly rate of $34, effective March 1, 2019, through June 30, 2019.
Any discussion? Any questions? Mrs. Franc... Got a second. That's, oh, do you have a question?
I did. This is from CUSAC, a recommendation...
This is keeps us compliant with CUSAC regulations.
I need a second on this one?
Second.
Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Will, would you like to do Operations and Finance?
Yes, please.
Ma'am, I'd like to move items number 1 through 5 under Operations and Finance. Second.
Any discussion? Will.
On item number 3, I just wanted to briefly go over, when I first ran for the Board, one of the things that I ran on was infrastructure in the school system. And obviously, no one person can do anything alone on Board. It takes a majority to at least get things through. But the support of the full Board for item number 3 and the ESIP is really such an exciting thing for me. So I wanted to say thank you to the Board, to the administration, for the hard work that was put into the LGEA and the ESIP. This is a great thing for this school district. For those that don't know about it, it is an energy savings improvement plan, and there is going to be quite a bit of infrastructure work that's going to be done for the school system that's going to, one, save money, and, two, be beneficial for the environment, and, golly, we couldn't go wrong. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we need to table those? Number 4? 4. Number 4 has to be tabled. Because you need 6. What about these other ones? I think we're good. Only 1 through 5. We need to have a motion to table number 4. Okay, move to table item number 4.
Second.
Discussion, it has to do with the amount of people. We don't have enough for...
For the transfer?
Transfer, okay. And that's why it's being tabled, is we don't have enough to go ahead with the vote. Any other discussion under Operations? Okay, Mrs. Francisco, roll call.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Okay, now there...
I'd like to move item number 6 under Operations and Finance.
Okay, point of reference here. I don't know if we, do we have enough for the list of bills? Do we need 6 on each one?
Well, we definitely, we need 5 to pay bills, so...
Okay, so we can still go ahead?
You have to payroll, you have to abstain on payroll.
Yeah, I have to abstain on payroll.
So it's, other than payroll, you can do, but not on payroll. And then you have to also table the ones with the transfers. This is number 6.
So we need 7 tabled?
Table number 7. Move to table number 7.
Point of inquiry. Is there any way to invoke the doctrine of necessity for the payment of payroll?
Is that an emergency? No, there's not going to be anything that would-
We don't have the ability.
We didn't know. This happened tonight fairly quick. People are ill, so unfortunately. All right, so we need to, we need to table 7, 8?
Should we, should we vote on 6 first?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll table everything?
Okay. All right, yes. So, Will, who seconded it?
I did.
I'm Miss Romeo.
Kate. All right. Any discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco, it's for number 6.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Move to table Resolution 7.
Second.
Okay. I think that, why don't we try to do them all?
Sure.
Because they're being tabled.
Sure.
All right, so-
7, 8.
7 and 8. Move to table Resolution 7 and 8.
Again, any other discussion? Not enough votes for, to vote. Go ahead, Barbara. What about number 9? That's also-
That's the treasurer's report.
That's the treasurer's report. That's okay.
I move item number 9 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
And Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Was there a vote on number 6?
Yes.
Yes.
Is I-
Number 6, yes.
Okay.
Well, 5.
Move item number 10 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
I move item number 11 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Second. You need a second.
I didn't, didn't Kate, Mr. Ochinski-
Oh, I didn't hear you. I gotta speak up there.
I heard a second.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Move item number 12 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Hey, policy. Mr. Ochinski, would you like to do that for me?
Policy, sure.
Yes.
I'd like to move items 1 through- 27.
Second.
These are all first readings on here, so. Mr. Seidowitz?
In regard to 12, 13, and 14, I know that student discipline and code of conduct was brought up at the, at the committee meeting. And I just wanted to say that the Aaron Decker School handout that you gave us was great in that I think it addresses a problem that we've been discussing, and that's the stigmatism with psychiatric issues. And in here, the disciplinary infractions and actions for this handout that you gave us has psychiatric evaluations for third and subsequent offenses. And in my opinion, things that we see with the unfortunate school shootings and suicides, that it's something that maybe we can consider for addition into it for a second reading. That way, maybe we can get the child study team to take a look at it and give suggestions if they want to have input in something like this.
That's gonna go, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, these are just the policies. There's a minor edit to these policies. They changed the old EVVRS report to the SSDA report, so we did change that. We are going to look at adjusting the actual handbook that our children get.
Great.
Which is a little bit different than the policies, a little bit more detailed.
Great, thank you.
So this is written for sort of the general public. The handbook is written for the children.
Thank you.
These updates came from SMay. They're just regular updates that we get.
Yeah, it's just a strike.
Yeah, yeah. But what you're talking about, the code of conduct that we're looking at, we're gonna do, we're gonna get a little more into that. I wanted everybody to get a chance to see that and give some feedback, because we'd like to create one that is across the board for all the schools in the district.
Great.
So, thank you, thank you for that input. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco, roll call.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Abstain on 22, yes to the remainder.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes, please. Okay, negotiations. Do we need to table these?
We're gonna need to table 1.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to table number 1.
Motion to table number 1.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Do we need a roll call on the table? On table, I know? Or can we voice vote to it?
You could do general, all in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next one. I also-
This is gonna be tabled.
We can do this one, right? Yes. Number 2, yeah, we need number 2. Could you do number 2?
Yeah, move to approve item number 2.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
I have, I just have a question. I thought if this involved contracts, personal contracts, that it had to be 2/3 of the board, total membership of the board. And isn't this personnel, isn't this?
Negotiation.
No, this is a fight.
Oh, okay, okay.
You have to have the board majority.
Okay.
The 5.
All right, okay.
And nobody's conflicted on this motion.
Oh, good. Oh, okay.
That's, yeah, okay. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make that comment. The reason that item number 1 was tabled, again, it has to do with lack of the amount of votes for, to be able to move it.
In light of-
In light of-
Conflict.
Conflict. I can't vote, so, and other, and Mrs. Romeo is conflicted also on those 2.
No, just lay it out now.
Oh, you, oh, you weren't conflicted?
No, I can put it out.
Oh, we don't, okay. Right, okay.
You can't do it.
Yeah, right, okay. All right, parks and rec. Mr. Guarino's not here. Safety, we had a meeting on February 8, and the next meeting is scheduled for May 2. One of the topics that came up at our safety meeting is that our police department is starting a program where they're going to be going into all of the schools and taking a visit. They're gonna be talking with the kids on a very, you know, very casual basis so that they get used to seeing our, our police officers in the school. So if your children come home and say, "Oh, you know, the police were at our school today," it's not that anything happened, it's just that they're trying to open up a little public, public relations with the schools and get the children, you know, comfortable with seeing them around and feeling comfortable enough to have a conversation with them. So that was one of the items that came up. We're, they're still working on different glitches with the shared 911 drills, and the next meeting is May 2. Superintendent's Roundtable.
Okay. The parent visitation day for the snow day is not being rescheduled. There'll be no parent visitation this year, and parents were not happy. The SAC program, there's a problem with parents that, that work on delayed openings. They want their, they want SAC open before the delayed opening, before the regular time because it, they're doing it on other days, and they just don't understand why. So maybe Dr. Anemo can address that. I don't know if that's been resolved.
We're working into that, too. We're talking about the planned delayed openings, not the weather-related delayed openings.
Even the weather. They said they-
The weather-related-
They are, okay, okay.
Yeah, but they're, they're open delayed.
They're open delayed.
At 8:30. Yeah, well, they're not coming.
Normally, it's early.
They want them, they want the regular time. Okay, inconsistencies with Honeywell, that's been addressed. Kindergarten online registration, there was a problem with the drop-down menu, but I think that's been corrected. Let's see, indoor recess, were there any updates on that?
Yes, we are outside at greater than 20 degrees, I believe. We're outdoor recess, assume it's not raining, it's not icy, so we're going outside more frequently than we were.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Thursday.
Thursday.
Passaic County School Boards, Mrs. Dwyer, myself, and Mrs. Francisco attended the Passaic County-
You were there, weren't you, as well?
Oh, yeah, Will was there, too, I'm sorry. We attended the Passaic County School Boards last month, and the topic was school safety and security. And listening to the gentleman from the Department of Education, I feel that West Milford, we're really right, right where we need to be as far as where the, the state expects us to be. And in some of the instances, some of the conversation was very enlightening. There was a conversation with Passaic County Tech and their SROs, and they were just starting to touch upon vaping, and I think we're way ahead of that. And I think there's some issues that we're, and maybe because we are smaller, we're able to address some things with our students. So I, you know, I think we all felt pretty good about when we left where we are as a district as far as our school safety and that we're doing all the drills that we're supposed to be doing. The next meeting, I believe, is Monday, the 4th, and I will be attending, and I think Mrs. O'Brien will be attending. That's for New Jersey School Boards, I mean, for Passaic County, for New Jersey School Boards. We're having our training tonight when Mrs. Hallowa comes and legislative. Well.
Okay. A bill that would codify park as a pathway to graduation for the classes of 2019 and 2020 have passed the Senate. However, after yielding to constituent pressures, the Assembly has removed the bill from being voted upon. More to come. Second, as a result of large aid reductions, eight South Jersey school districts have sued the Department of Education. The overall message is that the state increases need to be transparent so districts can plan for their futures. And more reporting to follow on that as well.
Can we sue? That's a good question. We should see how that's gonna go.
It costs money to sue. Let's let them do the work.
That'll be interesting.
War the merrier.
That, that's it. Will?
That is it for legislative.
Okay. Technology, Mr. Guarino's not here. Mrs. Dwyer, your liaison with the township and the board, I don't have your other with the Walish, so if you could put that in that report.
I'm gonna put that in now, because I don't have anything else.
Okay.
But I attended the meeting of the Friends of Walish, I guess about 2 weeks ago, maybe 3 weeks ago. What a wonderful group of people. They were so gracious and so informative and humble. That is the only thing I can say, is that they were humble. They're so interested in what they can do for the community and for our children. We are, we are responsible for some of that because Walish, Mr. Walish left some of that to us, as well as the town. But they pointed out the many, many things that they do, the money that they've spent, 20,000, 30,000, 35, 3,000, and everything they get is through a grant. The, the only thing they're having a problem with, and I'm, and I'm hoping that this board can help them, just to show goodwill, their port-a-johns are not paid for, and it's only $900 a year. I, I know we're in financial, we're in dire straits with finances, but I just, I just felt that, that we should do something because they're working so hard. One of Will's boys, Boy Scout, presented an idea, but it wasn't fully developed, and they were very kind to him, you know, and asked him to come back and develop it more. And it was a great meeting, and they were a great, great group of people, and we should appreciate everything they do because it's all volunteer. They're rebuilding floors in those buildings. They're rebuilding them themselves and not asking for anything. They're, they're applying for grants. So I don't think $900 is a lot, but I think we have to talk about that. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Casa, Kate?
Mrs. Fritz and I attended the last CAS meeting, February 11. The one announcement is that there will be training on Saturday, March 16, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the West Milford Municipal Building, the main meeting room. It's a free training called Youth Mental Health First Aid, and it's recommended for all adults, you know, that have any interest in knowing the signs, learning the actions, and being a lifeline for any mental health situations. That's the only new, current thing right now.
Okay. Old business.
Well, I want to piggyback on actually both their reports, because a group recently went to the Township Council with a proposed resolution that the, that the council seemed favorable to for addressing the stigma of mental health, and maybe that's something that we could look into and just kind of ask the town council more about that. I don't know more about it.
CASA is looking into that and discussing that as a group and a community of becoming a stigma-free community, is that what you're talking about?
Right, that's exactly. Right, that's exactly-
Yeah, so I personally don't know a whole lot about that, I haven't read anything on it yet, but there is discussion at the meetings. I'm sure that there's some, a process that they take to become. So it is being discussed, and I can find out more about that.
Thank you.
And, and just, there is a vaping seminar tomorrow at the Macapin. I think it's seven, is it seven o'clock tomorrow at the Macapin?
Yes, seven PM.
And I, it's open to the public, so I think it would be, you know, if anybody's interested, they might, may wanna go. That's something that, there's a speaker coming, Matt Mark had spoken about that too.
Yes.
I don't have the speakers-
A vaping awareness seminar scheduled for tomorrow at Macapin at seven PM, thank you.
Yeah, so if anybody's interested in going, that's tomorrow night at Macapin. Okay, old business? Anybody have any old business?
Move to close old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right. Can we move on to public comment and then have Kathy? Since she's not here yet.
Skip new business?
Yeah, you know, new business and-
Because she's not here, so.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment and waiting for Mrs. Helloa to arrive. Public comment, members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first for five minutes for each speaker for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone under, okay, we need a motion to-
I promise I won't cause objects with this.
Wait, we have to close.
We have to close.
No, this is for news business, on behalf of-
Oh, okay. Well, we're not under new business.
We're not, we're in public comment.
Public comment, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
On behalf of whom?
That's what I meant, it's-
Who are you reading it on behalf of?
On behalf of me. I promise this is definitely not-
Okay.
My cousin.
Okay.
I'm reading this on behalf of Nate Bedford of Highlander Productions, Hewitt, New Jersey. Members of the West Milford Board of Education, audience members in attendance, and to the audience watching this meeting either on live stream or West Milford seventy-seven, I'm the man behind the camera who films the Board of Education meetings for the past few years. I would like to bring to light a cause and issue that has impacted me greatly and tragically. This week is the National Eating Disorder Association Awareness Week, and I come before you to tell a story. Seven weeks ago, my girlfriend of almost nine years, Lisa Ellis, died suddenly after complications due to walking pneumonia. Lisa died in her sleep on Tuesday, January eighth of this year. I was unaware of her struggle with her eating disorder. Lisa's eating disorder was a secret to me, but it did not define her. Although it was a part of most of her adult life, like many who suffer from eating disorders, she didn't make it public, either feeling ashamed or not thinking it's a problem. Lisa thought about others more than she thought about herself. She was bullied in school because she was deemed too pretty. Lisa was a beautiful, smart, caring, funny, and intuitive young woman. She loved her family, animals, mostly dogs, a Dallas Cowboy fan, and a fan of the New York Yankees. She was a great artist, creative, spiritual, loved, and practiced meditation. She enjoyed taking me to new cafes, restaurants, movies, and walks in the park. She lived in West Caldwell, New Jersey, and I didn't mind the commute. Two days before she died, we had our usual Sunday coffee dates where we made plans for our future together. We had hoped that by next year we would be financially stable enough to settle down and get married. She was hoping to go back to continue her education at the Essex County College in West Caldwell to pursue a career in radiography. Thirty million Americans struggle with an eating disorder at some point in their lives, and despite the prevalence, eating disorders receive significantly less funding than other major mental illnesses, and support options are often inaccessible. Lisa had a few stays, thanks to her family's support, both inpatient and outpatient treatment at centers like Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. She tried very hard to beat this disease, which is one of the most deadly mental health disorders, as evident by her tragic passing. Her older sister, Megan, formed a team for the National Eating Disorder Association in her name on Sunday, April seventh, at the Brookdale Park in Bloomfield, New Jersey, from ten AM to one PM, as her family, friends, and myself plan on walking in her memory. We're currently looking for donations to contribute to the National Eating Disorder Association, so others who struggle similarly can receive the help with prevention, treatment, and access to quality care. Whether the Board wishes to make a donation as a whole, or if individual members wish to donate, I have the website, www.neda.org/Montclair2019. Our team is lovely Lisa. Any amount donated is greatly appreciated. I plan on talking to other local entities, organizations, businesses, and individuals to support this fundraiser. All donations are tax deductible. In conclusion, I hope that I have provided awareness on this mental issue with my own tail. Since Lisa's passing, I have tried to deal with the grief of losing the love of my life by being active, especially when I learned about her eating disorder with fundraising for the National Eating Disorder Association. I know she would be proud that her memory and story will continue on in helping others. If you would like more information, you could visit the website, www.nationaleatingdisorders.org, by visiting the Facebook page or Instagram using keywords NEDA or hashtag NEDA. Or you may talk to me directly. Thank you for your time and support. Sincerely, your friend, friendly neighborhood videographer, Nathan Bedford, Highlander Productions. Sorry, Nate.
Thank you. We're very sorry about your loss, Nate. Any other public comment?
I'm saying none of my listeners will be able to comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Okay. Can we do executive session?
We can take a session and then come back to the-
Okay, we need, we need a motion for executive session?
I move that at eight twenty-four PM, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
A second.
Okay, we're going into executive session now, again, because we're waiting for our presenter, and we're trying to compress the time so that this way everybody doesn't have to be sitting here longer than it needs to be.
We're just waiting.
We are, yeah, we will, we will come out as soon as she arrives, but I don't think we're gonna be that long in executive session anyway.
Just gonna take something to set up.
Yeah, so we will, we need a motion, you made the motion, did we get a second?
Second.
Second, anyone?
Okay. Oh, good. Okay, well, then we're gonna go with-
Iris, send the motion.
Okay, we didn't take the vote yet, so we're, okay. All right, so what do we, all right, Kathy's gonna set up, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and Mrs. Helloa will get set up, okay?
And there's coffee back there.
There is, there is coffee and cookies and things in the back, so please feel free-
Thank you, parents of Ashura.
To, to have something while, while you wait.
Thank you very much, not only for your hospitality, but also for your patience and flexibility. It's great to be here, but just in case you don't remember, don't know, I'm Kathy Helloa, your school board's representative. It's a pleasure to be back in West Milford tonight, because tonight we're gonna be talking about ethics, and it's a CUSAC requirement that boards of education discuss the Ethics Act once a year. So if you don't mind looking in your folder, on the right-hand side, second to last paper, right in front of the purple page, there is an acknowledgement of receipt. If you take that out, sign it, and pass it on over to Barbara, she'll have a record that we had this conversation tonight.
On the right hand side, almost to the back.
His vote for Barbara, he said, yeah. He's been on the file.
Twenty-six, right?
Twenty-six.
So the folders are great reference material, hold on to them, they've got a lot of great stuff in it. I've got a presentation to go through with you all about the Code of Ethics. I'm wondering though, and, and trust me, you can stop me as we go through the presentation, but I'm wondering at the outset, are there any questions that come to the front that you, that had a jump to mind?
I just wanted to ask, this is, this is a presentation that we do yearly, it's not, you know, recite any-
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. And a lot of the material is, boy, it sounds very familiar to you, but it is that CUSAC requirement that the board discusses ethics at least once a year, so to have the actual training and the conversation and all this, that is, that is really above the meal. So it's, it's excellent, I commend you all for it. If you don't mind, Rob, clicking on forward, okay. So the School Ethics Act, you know, really is, it, first and first, it's law, it's legislative. You have the entire text of the Act in your folders, in the yellow, okay, that thing that's stapled all together. And it's long, and it's in legalese and all that stuff, so we'll break it down for you a little bit. But at the end of the day, really what this is about is holding the trust and the confidence of the people who put you in your seat, the electorate, your constituents, who said, you're our person to represent us and to make decisions with your, your own judgment for the good of the students in West Milford. And you need to hold their trust. You know, this is the same law from Cape May to Montague and everything in between, so we're all on the same page here. This is the baseline, this is the base, for everybody. So that's actually a reason to like the Ethics Act, because word like ethics, you think it's black and white, but it's not. There's different interpretations of it, there's gray areas, and as we go through this, there are areas that may even seem gray to the explanation. So it's good to have a baseline so that everyone's on the same page. Okay. So the Act itself, the legislation, did all of these things. You're very familiar, I'm sure with the last bar there, the training requirements for board members, you've got one, you've got two, everything, and you have to take through your first term, and each time you're re-elected. And your disclosure statements that you got from Trenton, that just reports where you, you and your family received your income from. So those you're familiar with, what we'll look at are the first three in the greatest steps, the Ethics Commission itself, the Code itself, and conflicts of interest that you may face as a board. Okay, so the Ethics Commission itself, nine-member body, meets monthly in Trenton. Everyone who serves on it is appointed by the governor to serve a three-year term. When it is fully appointed, we've got, it's just kinda interesting way of looking at it, right, we've got two school board members on it, two school administrators. But the majority of the membership of the Ethics Commission are non-school officials. They have nothing to do with board governance, they have nothing to do with administering a school. So just an interesting point of view to keep in mind there. The commission is not fully staffed right now, there is a vacancy, there's only one school board member. So there's one person who's looking at things through eyes that are familiar to us, right? What the commission does, and it is the commission that holds you accountable to compliance with the School Ethics Act, is it covers the two methods, right, advisory opinions or ethics complaints. That's how it does its work. They're not the board police in that they don't read the newspaper and find boards that are bad, or not, you know, come to meetings and sit there and this and that. No, 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 no. They have to be alerted to some kind of behavior that may be problematic. And that's either through an advisory opinion or an ethics complaint. And there's differences between the two, but the major difference is advisory opinions are, are about current or prospective behavior. If a board member is thinking, you know, I'm not quite sure if I'm conflicted, I'm not quite sure if these actions that I wanna take as a board member with my board are in compliance with the Ethics Act. I'm not, it's gray to me, I don't know. We always say as field service representatives and NJ SBA, your best source of an answer for that is typically your attorney, but on occasions, there's, you know, still some, you know, some fuzziness, so you may need to ask for an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission itself. Anyone on the board can ask for an advisory opinion about their own board. You can't ask for one about Wanaque, you can't ask for one about Verona, it has to be about West Milford. And you can ask for one about yourself or a fellow board member. If you're doing it in the latter case, you just have to let the fellow board member know that you're asking for an advisory opinion. Future behavior or current behavior. Ethics Commission meets, reads your letter, that's all it is, it's a letter, it's not a form, it's not anything else like that, and they determine whether or not your behavior is, is good, you know, under the Ethics Act. If it is, they advise you, if not, they advise you why it's not, and they assume that you will just take the proper course of action. And there's never any kind of fine in the public act. Complaint is different, because that's when the horse has left the barn, that's cast actions, and anyone can file an ethics complaint. It can be anyone on your board, staff member, community member, someone from Delaware can file an ethics complaint. And if an ethics complaint, which takes a long time to wind its way through the system, but if an ethics, if someone is found in violation of the Ethics Act, there is a penalty involved, you know, advancing. Sorry about this, the dark type, but basically, there's four steps. I mean, you would either be reprimanded, or censured, suspended, or in very extreme cases, removed. Actually, suspension's kind of removed is, is kind of rare as well. Most common is reprimand or censure. And they kinda go incrementally, you know, based on, based on the seriousness of the Act, or honestly, if you're the subject of reprimand after reprimand after reprimand, you're moving up the scale, you know, if you're in-
So in other words, if you had more than one complaint or something, they would be looking at it, yeah, in a different light?
Yes, yes, exactly. And all of their decisions, ethics decisions, complaints, are on the School Ethics Commission's website, and as you read through them, if you have that kind of time, and it is interesting way, and quite frankly, you'll notice that a lot of the complaints that are filed allege multiple violations, right? And you will also see that as we're getting into like five or six, you know, you know, then that's kinda serious business. Advisory opinions are not necessarily put on the website. The commission, after it issues an advisory opinion, and if they think that that kind of advice would be useful to boards in general, they'll publish it after at least six of them vote to make it public. And it's another difference between advisories and complaints, is the advisories are all standardized, if you don't know what district asked for it, identities are, are redacted, it's just the broad advice. Commission, complaints, you see everything, the names, the dates, the locations, they're hard part of reasoning why they're just such interesting. But any questions about those things?
I think the main thing that I have, but anybody, it's, sometimes it's confusing because it seems like the board can control the ethics. We, we can't, as board members, we can't control what happens with the other board members on the board, or, you know, like, if you have, if you have a multiple amount of complaints, it, it doesn't mean that it has something to do with the board, it might just have to do with a member, or-
Oh, yes, that's a, that's a very good point, and I also kinda lead back to the larger thing, the Ethics Act is about board members, it's not about boards. So even if you have a haywire board, you can't file an ethics complaint against a board. It's gotta be against an individual, or two, or three, and we will see complaints where it's like fifty million board members on there, but it's about the board member, it's about the board. And you're right, I mean, if you've got a board member, this is the method by which they are held accountable.
But anybody can file a complaint.
Anyone can file a complaint.
It's not, it doesn't necessarily have to be a board member against a board, I mean, it doesn't have to be a public or-
No, no, staffs do it, you know, community members who have parents do it, watchdogs do it, you know, those gaslighting, you know, who are very concerned about governance and, you know, tax dollars, and if they see something that's amiss, you know, this is the method for holding people to, you know, their feet to the flame, so they, they do get fined. And you'll also see in your folder, refrigerator ready, beautiful, you probably have this already from your past holders, but the Code of Ethics, this is a big one, this is, when you're filing an ethics complaint, you're, you're thinking someone violated something, you cite one of these subsections, right? So as we go through the program tonight, we'll kind of use a particular recent decision that came out of Monmouth County, where we had two board members on the same board who were quote-unquote tipped off by a member of the public that one of their employees, the business administrator, was working at another school district, violation of their policy and violation of the law. And they decided to investigate this for themselves, they decided to make a lot of public noise about it without going through the proper channels that we'll talk about that you're probably familiar with already. And they even took it to an extreme level that we'll go through, we'll find out a little bit more about. But those two people were found in violation of subsections C, D, E, G, I, and J. Okay? Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it is a lot, and they all stuck, you know, the rest. Good, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So going through these one by one, I mean, we don't have to spend an awful lot of time on it, but, you know, the important points, I mean, we've got subsection A, right, which is the, which is a real basic one, you know, all I, I'm not going to do anything that's against the law, that's against what the State Board of Education requires of me and my board, and, you know, what any kind of court orders are, are in place. That's pretty basic, if you don't mind looking forward. B is really my favorite, this kinda speaks to why you're on the board to begin with. And my favorite word in there is the word "all." You know, you are going to be making your decisions in terms of the welfare of all children, right? That's what you're here to do, it's as simple and as complicated as that. You're- You're here for every subsection, section, every level of talent and ability of your students, right? You're here to represent all of them equally. When you have something before you, you have to weigh all of their concerns, you have to make your decisions based on their best interests. Regardless, of course, of their ability, their race, their creed, their social standing, whether you like them or not, whether you know them or not, whether they're in your kids' class, whether they're not, you know, they're all the same. Moving on to subsection C, this speaks to what really the role of board is, right? You're policymakers, and you will confine your actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, right? The other thing that you do is communicate with your community, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But this is really a part of what those members do, right? So it's right here in the code, and you will help to create those policies only after you've consulted those who would be affected by them. That's your public participation concept, right? Your media, your public commentary period, your first reading, your second reading, that's how you take it. Subsection D, big one, big one, you current 50 million times, if you've ever gone to a school board's program, and if you haven't been to one yet, you will hear this an awful lot. You are not here to run the school, but you would see that they are well-run together with your fellow board members, together with your fellow board members. That's where your oversight goes, oversight, right? Not the postidien minutiae, what's going on behind the school doors day to day. Your oversight, your policy, your planning, your appraisal, your oversight. So our friends in Monmouth County, in their actions, they went against, you know, let's kind of look at C and D, right? So they obviously failed to limit their actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Their, you know, chastising, or attempting to chastise an employee has nothing to do with any one of those things. And to make it even worse, they didn't consult with board members at all. They didn't ask their superintendent if a proper investigation could be conducted, or was needed to be conducted, or if it was conducted, they're just kind of going on their own. And to make it even better, they determined themselves that all evidence to the contrary, this business administrator was absolutely working where she said she wasn't working, and was guilty, determined guilty, and needed to be reprimanded. I mean, it was just really ugly. And also, under good old D, right? Not seeing that they're, not seeing that, not running the district, but seeing that it's well-run. You know, receiving information from one of your constituents and then trying to follow that through is completely against the chain of command, and that's absolute malice. That's not oversight at all. Good old E. E is, if you start spending time on the Ethics Commission's website, E is the one that's the stickiest one. This is the one that's found, you know, people are guilty of most of the time. Recognizing that authority rests with the Board of Education, not yourself. Not one member, no one member has the right to make decisions for the board, no one member has the right to try to resolve issues on their own. That's not what being on a board of education is about. It's about working together as a body. You have your authority when you're casting a vote that's on your consent agenda. That's where it starts, and that's where it ends. And that's that. So you're not going into any other kind of arena and saying, "I am the Board of Education. I, I can do this for you, I can get this done, we're going to, we're not going to." That's not your role, the board's role, all that happens here in a legally constituted meeting of a form of greater. This one, I think is pretty clear. This is about your individual judgment, you don't surrender it to partisan groups or for the gain of yourself, or your friends, or anything like that. Enough said, I think. G, right, this is another one, surprising, that people are found in violation of all time, no leaks, right? If it's an executive session, if your superintendent gives you something that's confidential all over it. It's confidential, and it needs to be treated with the utmost seriousness. I can't believe how many Gs are out there, so, there's tons, there's tons. They're juicy, they probably make the board member feel really good when they're telling their friend, or maybe even a concerned parent, or student, something that may make that recipient feel better, or get them agitated, or this and that, I don't know what the purpose is, but that's not your role. As much as you may feel that it would serve a greater good by spilling this information, by being, another word I hear a lot, wanting to be transparent. Need for transparency, right? Love transparency, but sometimes when I hear that word, I got to stop and really think about what this person is trying to say, because confidential information and transparency, they're not in the same worlds, they really aren't. There's a reason why information is confidential, so a lot of times it's a matter of law. So stay away from good old G.
And confidential is confidential forever, right? I mean, like, if you know something about a student, or something that's never going to be public, it's confidential to you forever.
Well, some things, sometimes the need for confidentiality goes away. Your attorney can kind of guide you through that, but typically, yes, you can learn things like that.
I mean, like, if you leave the board, it's still confidential.
Oh, absolutely, well, that's another thing too. I mean, if you take in an oath, to keep material as before you as a board member, while you are on the board.
That's forever.
Yeah, I mean, that's an oath, right? That's an oath, and hopefully, we go by that even after our term expires. So our buddies, obviously, they, like tons of other people, are guilty of good old E, right? Interestingly enough, if you read through that, when the board didn't take the kind of action that they wanted the board to take with regard to this employee, they called up the county prosecutor and started to make backdoings and start, you know...
Was that Wes Milford? Was that Wes Milford? You don't have to tell me where it was.
Is it Monmouth County? Is it Monmouth? In a past ethics presentation, I had a case filed for her, and I'm sitting in front of her, and I'm like, oh...
It was theirs?
Yeah. It was a few years ago, but I was like, I hope they don't recognize me, so I imagine that's... But anyway, no, so this is not, obviously, this is not Wes Milford. But imagine, these people were really going, 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 as, they were going, if anyone who would listen, they would also go for G. Now, here's the G there. The information they were proffering, that they were saying that would have been confidential had it been true, was not true, was not true. However, complaining about it, sharing about it, created a justifiable impression that it was true. And that's part of the whole purpose of the Ethics Act, is to avoid justifiable impressions that you are in violation of the Act. So even if technically you're not in violation of the Act, and you can point out your good intentions or in this case, I'm sure these people, if they wound up getting an attorney, I'm sure their attorney probably threw it out there like, "Well, it wasn't even true anyway, so it's not confidential." No, it's all about the impression that your constituents may attain after watching your behavior and being pretty bad. Okay, I'm like, looking through, right, back to the code, just a few more of these. H is about appointing personnel. I know that, especially with new members, you know, voting to appoint personnel can be a little bit... It may be a little bit unclear, like, "I'm voting for this person, but I've never met them, I haven't seen their resume, I didn't interview them. How do I know that this is the right person for the district, that this is the best person for the job?" We know, especially with teachers, what a difference they make for our students. Well, the reason why you know that is because you have hired a superintendent, and your superintendent is the educational leader of your district. They are more than qualified to make the best hire for your district. It's just a matter of law that you have to vote on them. If you're not comfortable, you could certainly ask your superintendent an important question, which is, "Why do you think this person is the best for our district?" But that shouldn't, you shouldn't expect a very detailed answer with transcripts, or this or that, or sitting on the interview, or anything like that. Really, unless you have a solid reason to not approve your superintendent's recommendations, you generally want to go with that. That's not to say that you might not have a solid reason, it's not to say that you have to, that you are required to vote yes on everything. But you do have to be very careful about, you know, what is often called like arbitrary or... And sometimes, I mean, when you click that no, you know, when you say that no vote, you may be going down that road, so just be very careful. And also, you need the superintendent's recommendation, right? You can't say, "Well, I don't like this name on the agenda, but my next-door neighbor's nephew is perfect," you know? That's, you need the superintendent's recommendation. I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. One of my absolute favorites right after B, because this gets you out of so many sticky conversations, especially for a new board member, "Ooh, you know, everybody wants to talk to you at church, at girl scouts, at sports, in the parking lot of the supermarket," about a staff member that's just not doing things the right way, or they have, you know, and you can't be a part of those conversations. You fall back on the Ethics Act, right? I'm not saying you shut somebody off and were like, "Ah, Ethics Act, I gotta go," but explain to them that, you know, as a school official, as a board member, you need to follow the chain of command, because the board is the last stop, you know, through the complaint procedure. And if you are kind of entering that chain of command a few stops too early, you're circumventing the whole, you're just causing a lot of problems, and honestly, if it does get before the board, you probably should just recuse yourself. So they don't, they won't even have, you know, they won't even have, you know, your voice in that discussion. You don't want to, you know, so much. And here is that chain of command, right? Any kind of complaint that you receive needs to go to the superintendent. And also, you will act on complaints of public meetings only after the failure of an administrative solution. Failure, you know, an unpopular administrative solution, or an administrative solution that you may not necessarily agree with personally, or the majority of the people who show up to your board meetings, that's not the failure of an administrative solution. However, if someone is unhappy with the administrative, the ultimate administrative solution, that person, or group, or whoever it is, may seek for the board to examine that decision and positively reevaluate it, perhaps go in a different direction. And that means an agenda item, that means it may mean going into executive section and kind of this case by case, it's rare, it's very rare. Ninety-seven percent of complaints are resolved before they get that, before it gets to you. But for that three percent, that might not, I mean, and honestly, and all the time that I was a board member, that it was for me, it's imperative that you all know your role, and that you don't try to step out of that chain of command, never, before the board, it's not before a single board. It's not before a single board. Any questions on that? Good, okay. So our pals, we know that obviously they were, they were not, they were undermining and compromising their poor business administrator, not cool. And they circumvented, you know, the whole chain of command, as people already established. So not good, not good. You know, Mike Fenton. And that's all they got, a censure, right? They got a censure. What's a censure? A censure is, bless you, bless you. A censure is where the board president reads a statement allowed at a meeting that they could censure in line, and that's that, and that's that. So, and I think they're still on their board, God bless them, so, and two of them are, but anyway. Are you allergic to cats?
No. No, this is, this usually happens three o'clock in the afternoon, but it's just a...
Well, you held off for a while.
I know, sorry, I don't know, I'm allergic to something, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I just, I would feel bad.
You sound like a very sickly woman, thinking at me, and then just...
Well, at least we didn't get rolled out, right?
Yeah, I'm well.
So here are some other problems, people who ran amok of the Ethics Act. You can read all these in the packet, honestly, but someone, this is a really fascinating case. At that first bold point, it's out of Pleasantville. Not very nice, you know, actually yelled at a school administrator to the point she was expecting, actually, and she had to go to the hospital because she fainted, it was not good. So, yeah, so that was, and if you click that, this person was actually suspended. They were found in violation of E-G-I-N-J. You read through the whole case, it's tons of pages. This person also is now sitting on the Pleasantville town account.
Moving up in the company.
And it'll be true, it does get depressing, right? It does get depressing, these are, this is going, this is a big, I, you know, a lot of board members are, you know, hopefully most are very passionate about serving the district, right? That's why they're sitting there, that's why they're doing all this, for no money, all these meetings, and all of this backwork that you have to do. But you can't just show up at a school unannounced and do any kind of looking around, or investigating, or checking things out, or anything, asking questions of the staff. That's not your role. If you do really want to see the new, you know, steam lab, or something like that, or, you know, that's understandable, but you need to ask your superintendent first. And quite frankly, in my opinion, it's probably best to wait for your superintendent to ask the entire board to come and see the great results of the new program or the new facility that's being implemented, right? I mean, so this way, everyone's on the same page, and it's a real point of pride for the district. If you don't, you're going to be, you're going to be in violation of the Ethics Act in any case, so not cool. Rice notices, okay? Rice notices can only be issued by the board's secretary, except for the superintendent. Superintendent is rice by the board president. In this particular case, which really made a lot of noise about rice notices, a member just wanted to rice an interim superintendent, wasn't the board president, and, you know, then became the board president away from the table, by the way, where they're circumventing, oh no, I do know what it's calling, and this may have seen this. And then decided, you know what, we're going to terminate this interim superintendent because we couldn't stand this person, and had a replacement in mind already with salaries and benefits, yeah. So, these are, these are, yeah, but this kind of thing happens, and you've got to think of it, here's a person who clearly, they're a school board member, they advocate for their district, they just didn't like this person. There is a right way and a wrong way to address performance concerns. That's the wrong way, and that person was reprimanded.
Thank you, I have a question. If an individual board member wants someone riced, that has to be done, the individual board member can ask the president, or the business administrator, superintendent?
Well, actually, I'm not sure why a board member would want an individual other than the superintendent to be riced, because the superintendent is yours only employee, right? So for me to say, you know, that I wanted, let's say, my kid's teacher riced because I had concerns about this or that, and I know it's a bad idea, that's not my role. Like any other board member, any other parent, I would need to go through the chain of command. If I have a problem with my kid's teacher, I go to the teacher, then the principal, then this or that. Certainly don't start by asking for a rice notification, so I can talk about it with the board. However, if there is a good reason, I'm not, it's not coming to my mind right now, but there may well be a good reason for an individual to be riced. You know, a board member wouldn't really do that. If there's a concern, you need to go to the superintendent, explain the concern. You might stop right there, you might stop right there. If it doesn't, the superintendent decides to, the superintendent can rice that person. If the person's not riced, then it also stops, okay? And a rice, and everybody knows what a rice is, okay? I'm sorry, I speak... I'm sorry, I speak like everybody's absorbed in the stuff. Yeah, well, it's not even an acronym, that's actually somebody's last name. But I kind of forget, like, you know, people don't know what, you know, SEL is, or CUSAC or blah, 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 just because I think about it. And look at this, I asked one, imagine this, imagine this was against the, a board member requested favors of his child's principal for his kid, and ignored rules placed on other parents. Imagine that, that wasn't good, that was probably a real easy one, but the person got a reprimand, so I guess they got some credit on this. All right, next slide if you don't want it. Conflicts of interest is another thing that we need to be concerned about as board members. It's not addressed in the Code of Ethics, it's actually in the, in the yellow part, is, you know, we put under 1224. But they're pretty obvious, I mean, you recuse yourself if there's some kind of a business interest, or a financial involvement, or a gift, or a personal involvement that creates an unwarranted benefit. Doesn't mean you can't be on the board, but you need to step away from those conversations, those discussions in any kind of vote. And this is where we start talking about what an immediate family member is and what a relative is, okay? Because that comes into place as far as conflicts go. So an immediate family member is someone who is your spouse, or a dependent child who lives with you, under you. That's how it's residing in the same household, that's how the statute defines that. If you don't mind clicking forward. So here's a couple of bad behaviors. Board members who voted to appoint a city councilman as their assistant superintendent when they worked for the township, that was bad news. I think, was that a censure? I think that was, do you mind clicking? Let's see if it pops up. Oh, it was a reprimand, okay. Which is the lowest level one. Discussing and voting to approve a settlement charge, agreement to dismiss, "I won't, I won't file ethics charges if you do this, and I won't," that's not cool. Okay? Insinuating yourself in the hiring, in the hiring process by recommending your own vow, not cool. And also, voting to reappoint an auditing form where your business partner is a principal, not good, that's, you know, worthy of being, that may be conflicted. So it's worthy of stepping out of that discussion, whatever. And that one was, let's see, if you don't mind clicking, oh, they got a reprimand for that. Okay, we'll advance. All right. So, who's a relative? We talked about immediate family members. A relative is a much larger net. It's in your slide, if you can't read it, spouse, civil union, domestic partner, parent, stepparent, child, stepchild, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandparent, grandchild, your siblings, your stepbrother, your half-brother, your half-sister and stepsister, your aunt, your uncle, your niece, your nephew, or your spouses, any of those things. That's a relative. That is a relative. Like blood, marriage, or adoption, it's a very big net. And why do we talk about relatives? If you don't mind clicking, it's about hiring and also about the negotiations process. So you can't hire a relative, a relative, the big definition of yourself, a board member, or your superintendent, unless, unless you have tried everything to fill a very specialized position. This actually happens in remote districts, LBI, it happens a lot. And you just can't find anybody except for somebody who fits that definition of relative, or even immediate family, and you can ask the executive county superintendent for a waiver. If you can prove that you went through a very comprehensive, you know, process to find someone, and no one's coming up, then you just might get a waiver to hire a relative. But the superintendent can't recommend to the board somebody otherwise, unless you've got that waiver in place. Because they really, again, except they've got, unless they've got that waiver, they can't exercise authority over, over their own relative. If you don't mind clicking. Also, if you've got a relative or somebody else working in your district, maybe it's somebody who qualified under that waiver, or more likely, it's someone who was working here before you were elected to your seat, then you cannot take part in any kind of matter that involves a superintendent and the superintendent's job performance, whether it's hiring the superintendent, or whether it's reviewing the superintendent. You're deemed to be conflicted. And that's that big definition, the relative definition, which of course includes immediate family members, in district. So if you've got somebody working and wanting to do that, well, see, that's okay. But if you've got someone who wants to work in West Milford for the district, that's not. We have a lot of districts that have conflicting. I mean, going back years ago when I was, it wasn't as much, but it seems to me that almost every board has somebody that's conflicted on it.
It, it's true. And that's my experience also. It's a small state that really honestly cares a lot about education. I mean, we're, we're one of the top, we're in the top two states in public education, and because it just goes to show, we're really invested, so that doesn't surprise me. It actually kind of surprises me when I have a board that doesn't have anybody else. Next slide. Oh, okay, negotiations. This part is in our package, we're going to have to take note. It also comes directly from an SEC advisory opinion. Basically, if you've got an immediate family member who works in the district, again, immediate family member or relative works, you are out of negotiations 100%. If you have this more narrow definition, the immediate family member who works out of district, they're in the union, but they work in Cedar Grove, for Cedar Grove Public Schools, for example, you are out of negotiations until the memorandum of agreement is reached, and the salary guides, and all of that business, all the common, then you can, then you can cast that final vote on the collective bargaining agreement, after all that's done. If you have that large picture definition, that big relative definition, who works out of district, again, the big definition, your nephew, who works in Dennis Township, then you're in. You can vote, you can discuss, you can be out of negotiations, you're probably on. That's different. That's actually backtracked. At one point, they were saying, the, the commission had a ruling that said if you have the big picture, the relative, working in another district, even if you never saw them, but they happen to be related to you, you were out of negotiations, but they backtracked. So, if you think, "Oh, I didn't realize that," it's probably because you heard something differently a few years ago. Notice those asterisks, by the S's, absent another conflict. Your attorney is a great source on this, if you're, if, just to make sure, but, absent another conflict typically means, on the next slide, I think we have it, that last bullet point is the most popular. Immediate family member who is in the union and serves as, then has what we call heightened union involvement, maybe serves on their local district's negotiations committee, maybe the president of their local union, vice presidents, that may create heightened union involvement, and that may conflict. So just work with your attorney on that, keep a list of who works where, and what they do, union-wise, and you should be able to keep your nose clean. Now, this one, this, you know what? This A 10-18 is a fascinating opinion, and it came out last year. And in this particular case, we had a person on the ballot uncontested, right? No one else was running for the seat. And this person had served on the negotiations team, was not popular with the union, this particular person, who's up for reelection. The union contacted the board member and said, "We'd really like to make a contribution to your campaign." And the person said, "I don't need your money, and I don't want your money, and I don't want your endorsement." So, adios, right? And he's, you know, I'm about, I'm quite, of course, he's going to get in, right? So, they took their money, put it back in their pockets, but they said, "You know what? We're going to write a nice endorsement, and we're going to endorse him anyway." And then when he won, and when he won, they said, "Oh, you can't be on negotiations anymore, what a shame." Because if you are endorsed formally by the union, you need to sit out the next round of negotiations completely. So wasn't that smart and infuriating, understandably, to the board member? They wrote to the Ethics Commission, and the Ethics Commission said, "You know what? You're in." So, very creative, very creative.
You can't always circumvent something.
But that one, yeah, but that one.
So doctrine of necessity, if you have, and this speaks to what you were mentioning before, Lynette, if you have a board where the majority is conflicted, and cannot participate in any particular kind of action, most commonly negotiations, you need to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Your attorney does it, you just kind of write on there that, you know, this is the reason, this person's conflicted for this reason, that reason, this reason, that reason, it's the majority of the board, therefore we need to invoke the doctrine of necessity, and the board can vote on that particular agenda. However, as far as negotiations goes, in forming a committee, the SEC has, has a rule that even if you only have one school board member who is not conflicted, one out of nine, or seven, or five, or whatever it is, that person can be the negotiations committee. You can't invoke the doctrine of necessity to form a committee.
Also, it has to be, you have to have, the whole board has to be conflicted.
To form a negotiations committee. And in that particular case, I think it was for example, one person was, and they were nuked, and they were nuked. Not, not. Now, if your superintendent or your VA happens to be conflicted, they cannot take part in negotiations discussions, but they can serve as, you know, like as a reference, they can give you reference material, but they can't join the conversation, they can't be in another negotiations. Volunteerism, this hasn't changed since the last time I talked to you all about this, but it has changed over the years because there really, for a long time, there was no, there was just no question about whether volunteering in the school was okay or not, until of course there was some bad behavior, and somebody asked for an advisory opinion. And in really examining the question, the Ethics Commission determined that some forms of volunteerism may very well run up against your role as a board member. So, basically, what we're trying to avoid is that whole, "I will see to it that the schools are well-run, I won't try to run them myself." And in that case, keeping that in mind as the benchmark, if you're in there once, twice, very infrequent, open to all, you know, handing out popsicles on field day, being a chaperone field trip, reading to the kids on Dr. Seuss Day, whatever, that's fine, that's okay. But if you start coming into the school regularly as a school volunteer, right, not as a PTO volunteer, because a PTO is a separate organization altogether, not as someone for the Girl Scouts and the Reclamation, which is a separate organization altogether, but if you, let's say, said, "You know what? I'm going to run the, the history club. We don't have a history club, I'll, I'll do it, I'll run it for the middle school, I'll be the moderator." That's not consistent with your board role. Any kind of thing that involves frequent interaction with staff and students could be a problem. What we're looking to avoid is, it's in quotes there, and that's actually from the decision, any kind of impression that you are enmeshed in the building. And kind of the benchmark is, is if anyone walking into the school might mistake you for an employee because they see you there all the time, that's not good. That's running real close to date, if not right up against the, again, it's that justifiable impression thing, right? And we do have a nice article, it lives in the folders, about volunteerism, that you can read, and we're going to. We'll advance. Do you guys do interview committees here?
Yes.
All right, got to be careful, you're probably familiar with this. The SEC strongly discourages interview committees, but if you're going forward with it, because the superintendent does direct the hiring process, okay? That's a non-negotiable, everybody recognizes that. So if it's fine, if you're, if, in some cases, it's the superintendent's idea, and that's to be honored, that's okay, but you have to follow specific guidelines. They're outlined in that decision 0412, which is on the website, but basically, you're there to observe, you're not there to ask questions, you can't kind of give your opinion that, you know, rather than your superintendent's opinion. But I imagine that if you've done these interview committees before, you probably judge more that not, it's a, there's too much breath on. Exit interviews, on the other hand, is, the commission was very firm about it, it said, "No, real quick and short decisions, we will not, no." That's micromanaging, that's, you know, day-to-day, that is not oversight, okay? We can advance, and I think we're just about, I think the next slide, yeah. So, basically, read school board notes. If there's any changes or court cases, or advisory opinions that you should be aware of, or ethics complaints that come down, that would be of great use for board members to know about, it'll be in your school board notes, your paper copy or online copy. But your best source, and if you have questions about this, field service reps, you know, field initial questions all the time, because we're really immersed in this, but your best source of information and guidance on whether or not you're in compliance with the Code of Ethics or the Ethics Act is your board attorney, is your board attorney. And that being said, I'm just wondering if there's anything that I didn't address that you're kind of wondering about. I know that was a pretty wrong situation, but there's always some kind of test.
What about board members who use social media to promote their own agenda?
Well, that's a really good question. I'm glad that you asked it. And I hope that you have this coming next year, because there is really not an awful lot of guidance on social media itself from the SEC. However, there are cases before the SEC that deal with social media currently. So we can expect some kind of guidance from them that's a little more pointed in the social media direction over the next year, that's what we're hoping for, and we're expecting that. So, in the absence of specific guidance on social media, you need to keep in mind the guidance that's contained in the code, right, and apply it to maybe something that was a little bit more low-tech that we do have guidance on, which is like letters to the editor sort of thing. And just talking to your constituents and talking. First of all, you can never say that you were, unless you're the board president and authorized by the board, and you're carrying the board's message, that's been discussed in an open meeting and decided in an open meeting, that's the only message that the president can carry forward. Or, or a board member, when you're talking to your constituents, right? I mean, you don't want somebody to ask you, "What, what was this about?" Or with that, and say, "Oh, go call the board president, he's going to go right next to it." All right? So, you can do that too, but when we're talking about the media, right, newspaper articles or television, that's contained in your policy. So when you read your policy, you know, you've got to kind of look into that and say, "Where does social media fit in here?" And an awful lot of times, with a Facebook page, for instance, right, or one of these community forums, you have, you're projecting a message to a large group, is that the role of you, or is that the role of the president? Probably addressing your policy, we should be familiar with that. The other concern that comes forward with, with discussing board business over social media, I mean, there's a bunch of concerns, but one that really rises to the front of my attention is, you've got, you know, a quorum or more Facebook friends who are on the board, right, where you can see your discussion that you may well be having with another board member that you're just putting out there. That's counter to the spirit, I would say, of the open public meetings, right? And especially if there's discussion going on about a board member, about a board, not about a board member, but, well, maybe about a board member, but about board business, that's dangerous. It's dangerous, and it's, and then you may have other board members who aren't even friends and can't even see it, and they're shut out of the discussion. So that's a concern too. If you're talking about, now, there's another thing, like when you're running for reelection, right? Absolutely, lots of people have Facebook pages, they use social media to promote themselves, and they put that they did with the board, but that's about you, the individual, and that's kind, that's actually a lot different. that's kind of, that's actually a lot different than just, you know, the board makes a decision and then somebody goes on social media. And I'm not, I'm so sorry, I'm not saying, Terry, that you do this or anything like that, but just, and to say, you know, I completely disagree with the board's decision that we made last night, that was irresponsible of us, and I expect utter from this board and blah, blah, you know. That's not, you know, your chance to make that speech or to make those feelings known is when the board is discussing the agenda item. Once the board decides, you move forward with that decision, whether you supported it as an individual with your vote or not. It's about board action, not about individual action. An individual doesn't have any authority, unless you're voting. When you exercise your authority with your vote, and the majority wins. And if you're in the minority, then, you know, it's not like you got to go buy a bunch of pom-poms and run around cheering that. But, you know, you got to support it, you can't circumvent it. That's the work of the board, that's why you're there, you know? And sometimes it goes your way and sometimes it doesn't. But, you know, it's all about the board. I mean, you know, not to sound corny, but, you know, I spend a lot of time with this thing. It really is about kind of subsuming the individual's identity in with that of the board and the board. That's where boards will come on this thing. If you have board members who are more interested in making sure people know how we may feel all the time, rather than the work of the board and the decisions of the board, it may be less than optimal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry to talk so much, but that's it. But we'll look at, social media is fascinating. It really is something.
We'd be happy to have you come back, that's who's out.
Oh, I'd be happy to. And you know what? There was actually a case that's very interesting, just came out of Virginia, where it's not our, it's a federal case and we're not beholden to it, it's not in our district, but a board member for, I think it was a county board or something like that, had her own Facebook page, her own Facebook page. But this, and, you know, would put posts up, like come to our meeting, you know, benign-ish kind of things. And one of her constituents who was a Facebook friend said something that she didn't like, that like, she's, I think she said something about, come to the school board meeting, it wasn't her board, it was about a school board. And the person got on and said, eh, da-da-da, school board thing, da-da-da, nasty, nasty. It was her post, someone was commenting on it, she didn't like it, understandably, she took the post down, just removed it. It's her page, she can do what she wants, right? Oh, no, not Mr. Constituent, he did not like that. That was his First Amendment right to make that kind of statement, to put it out there. She's using this page in her capacity as a board, encouraging people to look at this work and that work, and so he sued her and he prevailed. And he prevailed. So that, to me, made my blood run a little bit colder, because that's her personal page, she made the post, he started commenting on it, she removed the whole thing. I kind of understand her point of view, but on the other side of the coin, why do you have a personal Facebook page that's talking about your board business? Board business on social media should be coming out of the district's Facebook page, and then you can share those posts if you want. That's the best practice of mine. And honestly, you know, we did a lot of talking about this with attorneys and, you know, with field service reps and this and that. So if you really want to promote the work of the district or, you know, for instance, if you're, you know, if you're doing a strategic plan or some kind of community, that's fine, of course you want to share it, but your best bet really is to direct people to your district's Facebook page. And one of the methods for doing that, of course, is to, you know, take those posts and share them. But if somebody starts negatively commenting on that, you got to be ready for that. And you may, in light of this decision in Virginia, you may want to think twice before taking it down. So in that case, you may want to think twice about doing it on your own Facebook page at all. I don't know how that's going to play out in New Jersey, if it ever does, and I'm not sure what the ethics commission is going to say about the cases before that have to do with social media, but the only thing we got from them so far is a board member called the superintendent, the terrorist on the Facebook page. And that was, and imagine that, that was wrong. So that's all we got, you know? We could have figured that out on our own. But other questions about anything ethics-related?
I just want to thank you for coming. I'm sorry that it wound up to be the way it is, but we, you know, with the weather and...
Well, thank you for having me and thank you for your attention. It really is a pleasure to present and talk.
I definitely encourage all, everyone here to take advantage of the New Jersey school board, what they offer us, the workshops, just, I, I think sometimes just the interaction between the other board members, when you network, you, sometimes you walk away and say, boy, I really don't have it that bad. Like you shake your head and you say, that wasn't really so bad. So, you know, and, and it is a learning process, I mean, we all, you know.
I would hope so, right? I mean, you, you know, you...
You grow it, it's always, you know, things happen. Sometimes there's issues that you never deal with and then all of a sudden it went wrong and maybe you handled it the wrong way, but, you know, you do have to move on. And I agree with what you said about moving on, once the board acts, then we have to move on, an active one. But I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, guys. And I hope to see, yeah, did you have a...
I do. What would be the process of getting evaluated for where we are in terms of our board certification? And what it would take to kind of get back to that?
Board certification is, it's a multi-year process, as you probably know, and there are a few conditions that you have that are kind of out of your control. One being, well, there's one condition, the board turnover affects whether or not you need to reset. So if, if a majority of the board turns over during the three years that you're working on this stuff, then you're back to square one, which is not necessarily a bad thing because professional development is excellent. I'm obviously very much in favor of that. But you need to get a certain amount of credits, the number of which escapes me at the moment to become a certified board. You need to have your policy manual looked at and labor relations to look at your contract and just what are your rights on that, within that three-year time. Sometimes we have to reset it, you know, a board's working on it, and then, you know, in year two, it turns over, between year one and year two, it's turned over, the majority's new, and we got to reset it. Not necessarily the worst thing in the world, but, you know, I just don't want boards to feel bad if it gets frustrating and pursuit of that.
There aren't a lot of, I, I know years ago, boards stayed, I mean, I was on the board for 14 years. So, you know, I, I understand that this time, though, the people aren't on the board as long, it's like they go for a turn or two, and then they change over, and that probably has a lot to do with the changeover and the certification of the board, because you have to have so many hours as a board.
We do, yeah.
I mean, as a whole, you know, like, seven members, like seven members.
And you do, that's another thing, you have an attendance requirement too. And it's not just a majority, you know, it's out of nine, you need seven, better four hundred there each time. Every time you spend an hour with me, that's one credit, you know, and I remember, you remember, I came for a retreat, which would have theoretically made a lot of, I know you were there, but we didn't have enough board members for that to count. So it's, I mean, I would never discourage anybody from pursuing it, but it is kind of heartbreaking when you've got all these lined up and then there's just none. Or, you know, have your board sick and you just miss it by one person. So absolutely pursue your professional development, I'm happy to help you, however much it is, but just don't, you know, it's not an indication that you're a bad board if you're not certified. You know, there are, there's this one board that I know is in my district, and they just had a marathon, they had this, I can't imagine this, they had, dude, I am not kidding you, eight, an eight-hour retreat. An eight-hour retreat to get their certification. I'm not sure, after eight hours, if anyone's got the brain power to absorb what's going on. So sometimes it's best to take it in small increments, it's different for every board, but, you know, but there's also, as, and you're a great example, there are individual levels of certification, which are excellent as well.
And I think a lot of us are also certified as board members. I mean, there are a number of us on the board that have quite a few credits, board credits and were certified.
I mean, I think Will was one of the first new board members to, you know...
Yeah, I don't, did anybody else get that? When I called school boards, they didn't really, they weren't prepared. Yeah, they weren't prepared.
Oh, well, you were in the first, you were the first time they offered it. You were one of the first people to get it, actually. That was the first time they offered it. So since then, yeah, more people have been getting it. But it's an achievement, yeah, absolutely.
I know that Mrs. Van Dyke and Mrs. Dwyer have been to quite a bit of trainings and they're probably ripe and for the certified board members. And she, and Mrs. Dwyer is actually on her second term and she's a school leader, so she might be close to certified board leader.
Yeah, well, you know what? They, also, when you're getting to that advanced level, you need to go to a delegate assembly for the first level.
That probably would.
And you have to do, yeah. Which is far away, yeah. And you know what? Yeah, that's why you got, like in Marser County, there's not more certified board members than there are in Sussex County, but, and they are actually, the department that does that are, are looking into maybe softening those requirements, because it's kind, it's kind, you know, when you look at the list, it's kind of like...
Or maybe moving some of those delegate assemblies up north?
No, they'll never do that. But, yeah, have you been to that facility? It's beautiful.
Twice, yeah.
Yeah, it, it does the job beautifully. So you kind of want to keep, and it is central to the state, but...
I was very thankful that they moved the governance training to Montlo. That, that was just so wonderful for us to not have to go, not have to go down South Jersey. And I, I mean, four of us went, yeah, that was...
And it was a good program too, yeah.
Didn't have to go, I think we were at the governance training.
No, I didn't have to go.
So, but, Terry and I and Ray and Nicole went, which makes it so, so much easier to be able to go, you know, to do it at night after work.
Yeah, and, and you know, my county, Sussex, Warren, and Passaic, kind of far away, so I get it and I advocate it for them.
Maybe that woman's from, they'll, we shall, maybe that's going to help us.
Well, yeah.
During the executive session, the purpose of discussing personnel, board certifications, current education matters, especially...
And we will be adjourning from executive session because we have no action.
Yeah, I am close at time. Somebody's yelling at me.
Second.
Say, roll call?
Oh, no, voice.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will be adjourning from executive session. Everybody have the purple, ready to move?
Oh, oh.
Nice, okay, yeah.
So Alex, forty-eight hours later, the board is open and the members can vote.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, very much.